Just your name?
I'll send that around.
Oh, I started one there.
Oh, then never mind.
What, are you asking for email and phone number?
Yes.
Email and phone number, but we just like to know who's here. So, welcome. Thank you all for... Welcome. I'll call this meeting to order in a few minutes after 7 o'clock. This is a public hearing of the Middlesex Planning Commission on our draft of the town plan. The draft is dated May 15, 2019. There's a hard copy there. There's electronic copies available on the Middlesex website. Thank you all for coming. We're here to listen to what you all have to say. The town plan is the plan for the entire town of Middlesex, and it's great to have input from as many folks and hear what people think about the work we've done so far. We've been working on this plan for a number of months, and it was a fairly quick process based on the information that came out of "What's Next Middlesex?" that happened in the fall this past year, and also sort of building on what was already in our town plan. We've had a town plan for many years, but the town plan had expired, and without a valid active town plan, you can't apply for grants, you can't change your zoning. There's a lot of things you really can't do, so it was pretty important that we get a new town plan in place and move forward. It can always be amended, and that's something we can do going forward. So, we're here mostly to hear from you. I'm Sandy Levine. I'm the chair of the Middlesex Planning Commission, and I'll have the other planning commission members introduce themselves. I live on South Bear Swamp Road.
My name is Mitch Osheski. I'm on the Planning Commission. I'm also the zoning administrator. I live on Trinks Road.
I'm Theo Kennedy. I'm on the Planning Commission. I live on Shady Real Road.
Elias Gardner, also on the Planning Commission, and I'm over there.
Dick Alderman, Planning Commission, Lister Center Road.
Do you all want to introduce yourselves? It's a small enough group. Do you mind?
I'm Tim Gallagher. I live up on the Center Road.
Stan Eastranger. I live locally. I grew up locally, and frankly, I'm here, you could say, just blatant flat-out self-interest because my family has a dairy farm, you know, 200 acres of land, and, you know, farming's going through transition, and I had a couple of thoughts I wanted to sort of run by the Planning Commission and sort of see how I can fit in with, you know, vision for town.
I'm George Longner. I live on East Tower Road. I'm on the Conservation Commission and the budget.
I'm Mike Belcher. I live on McCall Hill Road.
Michael Levine. I'm on South Bear Swamp Road.
And I brought some snacks. Feel free to get up whenever you want and help yourself. So, as I said, we're here to listen. So, thoughts, input, any ideas, welcome.
Couple of comments. Most of them related to what the Conservation Commission does. On page 39, and I just want to thank you. It's a great plan. It's pretty impressive feedback. Easy to read, easy to follow. On the town forest portion, which is on page 39, you mentioned that the Town Forest Stewardship Committee does the work on the town forest. Actually, it'd be better to say the Conservation Commission now, though it's dated anyway. There are two remaining members of the Forest Stewardship Committee. They're the same people as the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
But it's going well. You might, I don't know if you mentioned it, there are the trails that are going after the YCC, these conservation programs, to build trails on the town forest. And it also has a cabin. We have no idea what to do.
A what?
A cabin.
There's a cabin up there.
Oh, a cabin. I thought you said a cavern.
No, 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 cabin. Sorry. Somebody built a cabin, and we're trying to figure out if they're doing that.
Cabin, okay.
Is that one cabin or two cabins?
There are two. The owner, the former owner, has a '99 year old. Almost three of these on that. The other one, a cabin. It's what Mike your work mentioned. I don't know if you mentioned the forest about at the Ashport. Might be something to think about.
Thank you.
And the Conservation Commission is doing Ashport, just along Town Road. Can't possibly even go to the Ashport. But it's going to impact us.
So, the thought is there, what to mention, that that's an impact that we should be mindful of and recognize the Conservation Commission is doing a survey?
Is aware of that. The trees have to be cut down when you're getting, if you're in Ashport, you're trying to get a cabin. You'd like to think it's not going to happen. Waterways, I thought that was a good section. It's on page 42. I don't know if you noted that the town just went through floodwaters and headwaters. Our current Harrison and Marlins, that's in the town, have the select board in the conservation. So, those, the water quality of this, this thing is not a problem. You might mention Marlinsburg, as people know, is Shady Real. There are two water quality problems that we're getting grants to fix. That's the, I think of a full name. The Minuski River Conservation District. As long as it crosses the street, you can't see it. But something about the drain is reverting to the street. And the other brand is for Shady Real Park to move the, as you stand there, to move the heavy cables back away from the street where there's a lot of the water.
And are those things that are ongoing now?
Those are ongoing now. We're working on the park. Probably happen next year.
It's going to be a little bit of a while.
I'm tired because it's not a town. It's not part of Riceville Conservation District. And it's not a state. It's part of the Agency of Natural Resources.
Good fact. The Army Corps of Engineers created that back when the Riceville reservoir was built, and it was sort of designed as a flood spillway. And the, basically, the, I think it was the Corps of Engineers when they built it, the state was required to maintain that in perpetuity, and a couple of times they've tried to stop doing that, but Colin O'Neil keeps finding the documents saying that they're going to be taking care of it. So, they're, they'll take care of it. So...
The town is almost wrong. It doesn't seem to be able to handle it. But the town actually approved $5,000, obviously, to make a name. And then it would have spent it, just to stay resolved. Anyhow, that's going to be upgraded. I thought the energy section was good. You might note that the town passed a resolution. It's controversial, but passed by our...
Non-binding.
Two places. The two big energy uses in Middlesex are the two big, is there a high 80 mile, a hundred meter? You don't have much control over it. I mean, it's a town. My only other comment was on the Village District. We talked about this in Conservation. Putnamville is really different than this one. You could mention that needs to be addressed, but it's not really in specifics of town. I think the residents initially...
I've heard from residents of Putnamville, and they said with respect to the survey, they don't care what the town thinks, but they view themselves as a village, and always will, no matter what we designate them. And I assured them that this is only a town plan. We're not rewriting any zoning regulations right now. That's down the road, and we will certainly seek lots of input before we make any substantive changes to that document as well. We always appreciate input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
So, actually, I mean, what I'm interested in, I don't own the land, but, you know, my family has a dairy farm. They stopped milking cows, and there are, you know, a few hundred acres of land along the river, and there's, you know, a question in the family's mind about, well, more in my mind, about what's going to happen. And... And I'm looking at ways that, I mean, my mom is happy right where she is, but, you know, bankers do have debts, and they do want to have them settled eventually. And the dilemma that she faces with farmland is that, say, for example, where the southern farm is right now, the land, the farm stand is on, the grant is valued as $58,000 an acre. And the field base site, you know, that's just the way you refer to it, four or five acres of land, you know, people over the years have been interested in using that as, well, you know, some kind of industrial use. And I, I guess I'm kind of partial to farming, and I also, you know, the sort of following, well, following the river flooding, you know, all my life, and it's gotten, but years now that I've seen it go over the banks, and have an idea of a way for my family to pay down this debt, which would actually improve the floodway. And I've been looking at the state of Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, DNC, and there's all kinds of work being done with Lake Champlain water sharing. And one of the ways that the farm could pay down some debt would be that field in front of the farm stand. If you take out approximately, say, half a million yards of sand and gravel there, and you'd still have farmland, and you would, in fact, have increased the floodway. And the other thing is, you know, I've been watching the discussions about stormwater runoff and how to manage it, and one of the thoughts I've had is actually to take these fields and instead of trying to keep the water out, I mean, actually bring the water in to filter and as a way of also, well, you could be reducing the erosion on riverbanks. But the first thing that, you know, I need to do is to sort of run the idea by of, well, you know, to be able to say to the bankers that, okay, well, we've got the source of revenue in here, and the town does read sand and gravel, and the real question is, well, would you rather have, you know, commercial and industrial stuff going on there, or would you rather have, well, something that could be creative and innovative because, you know, the science is evolving. And the other thing is, I'm looking at that as a small part of what's going on in Middlesex, because, I mean, you're right. I mean, the town needs a plan to be able to look at these funding sources, but, I mean, my family's got the land along the river, but then there's, you know, 250 acres of James Colby's up at the interchange there, and I'm frankly kind of amazed that someone hasn't done something about it. But the idea of somehow or other, I mean, that is right at the interchange, and you could do so many different things, you know. And, you know, the price, I've seen it's like, you know, my husband gave $1,000, but, you know, that's a lot of money. I mean, I don't, I can't write that check, but for a project, it could be huge. And then you've got Betty Foote's property. She passed away this year, and there's a couple hundred acres of land there. Then you've got Steve Martin, the person's from, I mean, there's some pieces of land in Middlesex, and, I mean, I kind of, you know, dream, imagine whatever, I mean, not someone telling these landowners what to do, but somehow or other, you know, almost like a club you could be a part of, that you could draw on collaboration. And, you know, what's going on with Camp Me? I mean, it's just, you know, a tiny sample of, you know, what's possible. You've got the Hillist next door, and that's coming along. The farm stand down here at the corner, and I've warned them, we did, that they need to be prepared for success because that is a phenomenal location, and frankly, they are doing, you know, a wonderful job. There's really good, they're hard in there. And then, frankly, you know, the dairy farm over there, that's 40 acres. My mother's sister used to call it, you know, River View Resort, but as far as a place where something could be done, I mean, other than milking cows, I mean, I'm not happy with it or anything, but, you know, maybe, and then there's the land going down even 100 feet, you know, there's another, you know, closer to 40 acres, you'll get it. So, I'm questioning that. So, I don't, I don't have the answer. I mean, you know, my first question is, I'm approaching this person from the Agency of Natural Resources about, you know, the idea of sand and gravel, which would truly just basically die by a pandemic time. But that could just be the beginning of, you know, what do we do about these waters?
So, are you looking for ideas as what to do with the land?
Well, I mean, well, I mean, right now, I mean, I'm exploring the idea of, of the, that field staying, you know, in farming and, you know, taking out sand and gravel. But in the process of taking out sand, I mean, sand and gravel, I mean, that's just sort of a means to an end, because there are people in the Natural Resources Planning Community that, you know, looking at, you know, how could these flood plains be managed differently? And, you know, there's all this, you know, phosphorus, there's all this silage going into Lake Champlain, and, you know, it's just washing away. And, you know, you can fill it in, or maybe you can, I mean, the dairy farm over there, I mean, if you, I sort of joke, if you want to see what a million dollars looks like, drive over there and there are two harvester silos. They're those round blue, farmers used to call them blue jewels. But, you know, they were for the dairy farm, but frankly, you know, they're, you know, industrial scale materials processing things. It could be, but they're processing things from other farms. I mean, who knows? But, I mean, I'm looking at the idea almost of like an interest.
To, to ideas?
Ideas, yeah, yeah.
How to turn this land to...
Yeah. Well, I mean, frankly, the folks over at Camp Me, you know, one of them is hardly experienced in doing public events. You know, we used to have the pumpkin show at the farm stand, but, you know, the idea of, you know, whether you put corn days or you do, and whether it's there or somewhere else. But, well, the, I guess, I guess I'm sort of looking at the dream of, of, you know, working on something that, you know, creates, builds a synergy. So, you don't have, I mean, ideally, you know, James Colby, I don't think the guy's looking to get rich, you know? I mean, he's, you know, his 70s or something, you know, we came from town, but he's got this land. Something's going to be done with it. And there is somebody who I would just think that his heart and his soul would never, I wouldn't meet, probably that's a guy for his son, but, you know, I generally think people are good, you know? And if you give them a chance to do something positive, but, you know, you can sort of let things happen, or you can sort of take steps and, you know, explore ideas.
That's good. Other folks have thoughts or input?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you, folks, for doing all the work you're doing. And this village, I mean, I mean, one of the things that would be great if the Planning Commission review it, I mean, I've heard about, I remember that before, but I didn't kind of SimCity or what's it called? But almost like, like a playing game, you know, they say for kids in education, you know, learning manipulatives, you know, Buckminster Ford used to have the World Game, but the idea of there are all these different parcels in Middlesex, and, you know, but I just learned from Jimmy that Buffy LeCatt passed away, and, you know, down behind his house, the amount how owns it, and it's, you know, Jason Camp Me there. I mean, it's the primeval, primeval wilderness paradise. And this is something that nobody knows about, but, you know, that seems to be fitting with some of these other ones. But it's, well, I mean, you guys are leading the way.
That's great. That's good info. Thank you.
What you've done, so, you know, I'm a supporter. Don't misunderstand them in any way.
I thought the current use paragraph on page 35 was kind of weak. It refers to it as a five-word program, but it's only 86 properties involved. Because the main restraint on the enrollment is that you need a minimum of 25 acres, which is not mentioned. It's pretty important. In fact, that's a big factor that people cannot overcome. If you develop that property in a house, then you have to take, this is all two acres for the, in the house, it would be two mortgages. So, I just thought that could be better written. And also, what the land, once it's put into current use, it stays in current use, whether you sell it or not, or property that, if you remove it from current use, you have to pay a penalty.
Does current, does current use have a timeframe of 10 years?
No.
It's, it's...
No time for it.
So, once it's in there, it stays?
Well, as long as you maintain the requirements of current use, which includes the Carter Street Plan and actually doing it.
Thanks.
Well, there are actually, I mean, if you look, you would know this, Dick, from the Grand List work, but, I mean, there are a couple of huge parcels of land in Middlesex.
Right.
You know, 2,000 acres of land, and, I mean, I remember, you know, hearing this radio program talking about, it was a carbon collaborative or something, you know, the idea of, you know, pooling land together, whether it's, I mean, you're talking about the current use thing, looking at, well, looking at working around that so that you could, on one hand, you sort of wash the other, you know, keeping it in current use, but you'd also be doing the housing.
Yeah. There's two types of current use. There's supposed to be agriculture. Of course, your family's in agriculture. That's a much better deal. Current use, and all farm buildings also, they're not have to be held.
Yeah. Well, and the thing is, you know, open land, one house, where that's for dollars both for land services, but you don't need to.
Other thoughts or input? Thank you.
Just a question I had. This was really interesting to read. I learned a lot from reading.
Can you, I'm assuming people know you, but can you introduce yourself?
I'm Kimberly Jessup. I'm over on Wood Road.
Thanks.
And I was really fascinated by page 23, and there's a paragraph in there under commuting. And I just, I raised it just because I'm wondering what the going theories are about it. In the third paragraph under "be on commuting," it talks about the fact that 60% fewer Middlesex residents used other means such as the bicycle to get to work, and the number of people that work from home dropped 55%. And I just am curious what different theories might be around that. I mean, I have one, which is related to broadband, and for what it's worth, there are some very interesting things going on in central Vermont with the work being done with the CUDs, the Communication Union Districts, and that could make a difference in Middlesex, and I hope that it will. And I hope the next town plan will talk about how that might have impacted that. But I, other than that, I see, Elias, you're nodding, but I'm wondering what your theory is.
Well, I've been for sure, but I'm also thinking that the numbers are so small that how many people is that really? I'm looking here, you know, we had nine people walking in 2010 and 18 and 2016.
And the other thing to note is, some of these numbers, I think we have a bunch of caveats. We have to have these numbers in the town plan. They're extrapolated based on prior census data, so, and when the, when the sample size is so small, don't read too much into it.
Understood. I would, I would have just predicted that there would be a lot more people working from home. We talked so much about how that's a thing, and we know we have our challenges with broadband, but anyway, that, that's...
There may also be, I think there's, I can speculate, there's more, more people out in the workforce and not staying home, and, you know, as part-time workers, so that might also be part of it.
I mean, to me, it really comes down to the broadband. So, I really think that, you know, over the years, internet applications require more and more internet speed, and ours hasn't gotten any better. If anything, it's gotten worse for most people, and that you can't, most houses in Middlesex don't have an internet connection you can work from home.
The only general comment, my comments are much less interesting than your comments, but I thought that the section, I tried to make a note of it so I could be efficient here, achieving the vision, I thought that was such a helpful section. I personally, for what it's worth, would have liked to see that move up further in the beginning, even if it was just a little box, because I thought the info in it was super good, like, this is going to last for eight years, and, you know, whatever the little pieces were. And it did just a nice job setting you up for how you did the goals, strategies, and objectives, which is felt so good. And it's always just useful to run that through upfront for your reader, just a sort of a hand-holding. And great photography. I think I know where some of that came from. And I guess the only other thing I would say is, I personally am so excited about all the work that Mike and colleagues have running through their minds with planetary matters, and, and I do wonder what exit I will look like in the future. And I know that there's been some talk about, you know, light rail, and I like how you folded it in saying it's in the longer-term future. And there is a study being done to look at light rail, and there's a federal piece that's going... And there's a federal piece that's going with it called Positive Train Control. There was, there were those terrible crashes that took place in the Pacific Northwest. And so that may end up making use of rail much more complicated because of what is required, as I understand it, which is very little, but of the tracks and of the equipment used on those tracks. But I think the Bud Powers that, that have been talked about potentially for use in Vermont and just all...
They're sitting in the rail, they're ready to go.
I know.
The guy, you've got to give him credit. He puts money where his mouth is.
Completely.
Well, and actually, you know, one of the other resources that you don't mention there, I mean, sometimes people look at politics as very broad. But, but I like the politics of life, you know, just interacting with people. We have Patrick Wager. And if there's anyone who would have an interest in supporting, you know, the future of middlesex, I mean, of course, the expert in Washington, but, you know, he's hard to do. He's, you know, he may be top of the food chain, but, you know, he's a kind of a person too. But he's like, you know, he's so, so for us to be pragmatic about... Thanks for not being a crazy dream.
That's great.
So I have really just want to thank the planning commission. I came in with a very long list of very specific suggestions at the last meeting. And I appreciate you going through each one very carefully. Didn't, you know, agree with all of them, that's fine. But there is one that I would like you to reconsider, out of all of those. And I just, I just feel like the word is kind of inappropriate. It's towards the end where we're talking about Putnamville. And the sentence reads, "With recent successful development focused along Route 2 and closer to the interstate, Putnamville has seen little change." The end of that is obviously fine. I just wonder, if you have a word like "successful", like based on what? What's your criteria for that? And it just seemed like it stuck out as a, you know, somebody's opinion, but not really belonging in the plan. So I would just say, "with recent development", rather than "with recent successful development".
Look, did you mention it on what page that was on? I didn't.
Yes, it is on page 66.
Thank you.
Paragraph five.
You're in competition with a fan behind me.
Paragraph five, line six.
Okay, thank you.
Mike pays no attention to detail, Mike. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Page 66.
Other thoughts, comments?
You guys said it's phenomenal, John.
So, once you have this in hand, and that's where the achieving vision, or yes, achieving the vision, you then, how might this be used in a way that might be different from how past plans were used?
I don't know all about how past plans are used, but all plans, how this will be used, it will help guide any zoning changes that we might consider. There's been talk about changing some, some of the zoning in town. It would, it would guide continuing work on energy siting issues. I think we're looking at doing an enhanced energy plan for the town and working with the regional planning commission. And this is one step in that process. What really got us moving in this direction is we had looked into getting a grant for some transportation improvements, some sidewalks, streetscape improvements along through the middlesex village here last year. And we weren't even qualified because we didn't have a valid town plan. So we, we got kicked out before we could even really apply. So we were really interested in seeing if we could get a new town plan in place so we might be able to apply again next year. So that's, that's one of the things that I think we're looking to use.
I would say, this year.
This year, that's right. So that's a longer next year.
As a matter of fact, that was an excellent setup. I'm just going to add on to that.
Okay.
I attended a workshop yesterday held by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And one of the presentations they did was about the state's municipal planning grant program. And they talked about, you know, they actually said, one of their concerns is that funding has been tuck in recent years, and they are trying hard to get that back to historical levels of funding. And they mentioned some things, I will go through this in detail right now, but if anybody wants to talk to me about it later, I'm happy to. But they mentioned that the program that they are running for this year, they do municipal grants up to a maximum of $22,000 for a community. Or you can do $35,000 if you work as a consortium with a neighboring community. And it's basically a 10% cash match, can come from any source. So, for example, we could apply for a $20,000 grant to do, we were talking last year about a streetscape feasibility study. And there's a bunch of things like that that you're eligible for. We would have to raise $2,000, and we would be eligible for a $20,000 match. And they have some quick statistics in here about, last year, they awarded $450,000. And they got 67 applications, they awarded 29 grants. And they had $950,000 requested, and they basically were able to fund about half of the projects. And we were one of those that got cut out of the pile right away because we didn't meet that really basic criteria. And September 30th is the deadline for an application for this year. So our goal is to have a town plan approved before September 30th so that we can apply for a grant. And they had some really helpful information yesterday about how to do this grant writing and how you can reach out to community members to help polish up your grant. And they said, you know, something people forget about is, every town has got a bunch of people who are terrific writers. And you sort of start this stuff, and you don't have to do it yourself. You just reach out to your writers in town, and they'll step up and focus stuff like that. And one of the big takeaways was that things that you identify in your town plan as goals, objectives, tasks, you know, those are the sorts of things that they look at and say, oh, you know, they've addressed this in the town plan, they're ready to do this. And, you know, it's like, almost like a shovel-ready project. That's the sort of thing that gets you the point that you need to kind of get moving on this. So, you know, there's some, that's one of the reasons that a well-thought-out town plan is important, because it can help identify the kind of things that these folks are looking for when they review a grant application. That'll help it. And, you know, they, you know, one of the guys that talked yesterday said that he's been doing this for 10 years, and he gets a grant almost every year, you know? $5,000, $10,000, $15,000, whatever. And he said that, you know, after a while, he said, it just gets to be a game, and you just keep doing it. And so, we've historically not done that sort of stuff in town. And, you know, as Stan mentioned, there's a ton of opportunities in town. There's people already doing some things, like Mike and his group. And, you know, there's tons of opportunities. And, you know, we're not telling landowners how to use their land, but if people have creative ideas, I think part of our goal is to help.
One of the things I'd like to shout out on Field County Planning Commission is the whole what's next middlesex process brought many people together to talk about opportunities in the town. And kind of recognizing the need for a feasibility study for the village center was kind of a precipitive of that process. And those groups are ongoing. So we have the Economic Development Infrastructure one, Trails Communication, and the fourth is Spaces, Building Spaces, something? Yeah. So, so that continuing work, I think, this is a formally-worn public hearing. We're here, we're very glad to get comment. But the ability to have ongoing input through some of those other community groups, I think, is a, is a real deal. And, you know, I know that Economic Development Infrastructure is meeting tomorrow night, and we're going to continue to try to kind of figure out where there's a synergy between private folks and the formal planning commission.
And just to be clear, next steps in this, after we close the public hearing shortly, we'll then meet and talk about what changes to make on the town plan. It then is passed off to the Select Board. They will review it themselves. They've provided some feedback already. They have to have their own public hearing on the town plan. And then, it also will be reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission in the next couple of months. So, there's still, still a lot of process to do, but a lot of the groundwork is laid. And thank you all for your help and input.
I'd just like to suggest to you guys to, I mean, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. And you've got, you know, a darn good product here. And, you know, with the timeline that you mentioned it. So, you know, I'd encourage you to proceed full speed ahead, you know.
Stan, it's like you were with us.
Right, right.
We actually, she doesn't get enough credit, but a planner from South Burlington, Kathy DeRose, came on as a consultant to help us with this project. She did a lot of the work as well. She got paid for it, we didn't.
But Charlie.
Very first meeting, that was her, one of her takeaways was don't let the enemy, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
Yeah, and this is, you know, I mean, you mentioned the timeline. And so, you know, people can keep coming, you know, working at it. You know, this past concrete, you guys, people have left us. Those feet ahead is, I'd say.
Well, I think in line with that, it's not perfect now. That means we keep it a living document. Which is, we all keep revisiting, and that keeps it meaningful.
And not that I'm competitive or anything, but I did just see something in Times Argus a few weeks ago that Town of Berlin just adopted a new town plan. They got an award for their town plan.
Let's get their town planned.
They haven't seen ours yet.
I'm sure they haven't seen ours.
I'm hoping.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I will entertain a vote to, a motion for a vote to close the public hearing.
I'm not proposing a public hearing.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Thanks.